President.
All right, first order of business.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's go to specials now, Mr. McCosker.
Twenty-five questions and thirty amendments, sir?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Devin Ablard. I'm the Director of Outreach and Civic Engagement for the Los Angeles County Federation of Labor. And I'm here speaking in favor of Item sixteen and SB thirty-four. Those who oppose SB thirty-four are fighting a good fight for the future of all people. Those communities near the port complex suffer great health consequences. But those very workers who live in that same complex are here today to advocate in favor of SB thirty-four because they know firsthand the consequences that happens to families when the port complex slows down. You lose your job, you lose your home, you lose your health insurance. And, you know, I've been working with community and labor groups for a long time. I'm an environmentalist myself, but you have to ensure, you know, the largest driver of climate change is poverty. So if we're going to move on climate change, we need to make sure we're bringing workers with us. Please vote yes on sixteen and SB thirty-four.
Good morning.
Good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Thank you. I actually like Mr. Lee's, you know, in the end about the helping with the plants and stuff. But I'm going to ask the council president and the city attorney to please put all his items on hold until I receive my apology. He has yet to apologize to me for his rudeness. And after he apologizes, I will gladly support his items because they are, they were good. Okay, so that being said, okay, I want to start with the number thirty. Oh, Bob, this is one of yours, Bob. Okay. Like, I don't understand why you're trying to not have the permit process go through the appropriate process. And Bob should be listening. He's about to owe me an apology if he doesn't quit it. This is his item. Okay, thank you, Bob. But why? Because, see, that's what Scientology does, right? They try to put things through illegally or skip the system, and that's what you're doing here. And I'm sure that the one night public dance, I mean, the Reseda Rising Art Walk is a lovely, you know, wonderful thing, and they deserve to have their night of dance. But why not let it run through the proper process, right? Like, I have to, like, I want to get a permit. I'm applying for one, but, right, to protest, but why? But are you, Bob, are you going to give me, ask for me, can you put it on the agenda for me to bypass this? The process of the police, you know, evaluation of it? Because I would appreciate it. Because I would love to have that bypass. I would love to have that.
You've exhausted your one minute on item thirty.
Is that my one minute's up on that one? Okay, then the other one I want to go to is, I think, forty-one. Yes. Again, oh, this is Ms. Hernandez, and lovely, thank you for the lovely presentation this morning, Ms. Hernandez. And I do agree with getting software that you guys can finally inventory and assess, you know, the right of way and the public easements in public streets. You need that. I can't believe this is a city that doesn't know what you have. Okay, and I'm going to bring something on that, and this is why that program is needed. On L. Ron Hubbard Way, okay, Kendrick Moxon is pretending, or he showed some weird letter that the city gave him no per, no parking, okay? By an engineer, is, you know, this regular level engineer gave them a no parking for indefinite, which we know is not true. Okay, but you don't even know, like, where your no parking streets are, what's legit, what's not legit.
Speaker, I'm not sure which item you're speaking to.
Forty-one, about, because you're trying to get software, right, so you can keep track of all your streets.
Regardless, you've exhausted your one minute on item forty-one. Go ahead.
Okay, that's good. And then the other ones is for all the street vacations. No, no, and no, because, again, I don't want Scientology getting the idea that you guys are quick to pass out street vacations. We need L. Ron Hubbard Way open, so victims who want to leave can leave, and so that the public who wants to use the beautiful street can use it. Thank you.
General public comment.
Shout out, shout out to Smoke and Scan. Oh, I got three-minute public comment? I'll take it.
Go ahead.
Okay. And, you know, and so I want to talk about what happened on Sunday. Okay, randomly, somebody came across, it was a Scientology film permit. They had the proper permit from the police, apparently. And what they did is they had a bunch of people, there are people who, mind you, make slave wages. They don't make human regular wages. They make forty-seven dollars a week, had to stand still for four hours. They were not given bathroom breaks, were not given drinks or water or anything. They had to stand still even though no one was filming. How stupid do you look as a city to allow that to happen on our city streets? And then they lied and said they only had the street apartment, but they lied and told the police, oh, that they want to cut off the sidewalk. And the, and the police officer went along with it. You guys are looking stupid. These people are abusing, you know, their wages and their earners. And, yeah, and they're going after me too hard. Like, I'm in actual fear for my safety because of certain people in there.
Good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
So, look who we got here. I got myself, my own very own council rule. So if I get out, thrown out of one meeting, I get disposed of the rest of the whole day, plus the next business day. Let's see, Isabel Jurado's a lawyer. Let's give the city a hand for getting sued for three million dollars instead of two. Yeah, you see, you're ramping it up. And who sponsored it? Hugo Soto Stalin. You little bitch. You're turning into a little, little Jewish-owned little bitch. I'm going to bring you a yarmulke, you little asshole, fucking little turd.
Okay, so at this point, you're being repetitive. I need you to stick to the agenda items and move to the general.
I get it. I'm talking, bitch.
Also, you've exhausted your one minute on forty-eight.
It's my time. You get your fucking time. Now, as I was saying. Number forty-nine, the dog-eating festival. Yes, sir. We're going to be taking buses down to CD ten. And Heather Hutt going to be serving us up some nice lamb chops made of dogs. Let's give her a hand. Nothing better when I go down to K-Town celebrations with Pumpkinhead and I eat dog. You should try Buckethead. It's delicious with all of that delicious sauce. Now we get graffiti services from Staffer B, the FBI informant target, thirty thousand dollars to remove graffiti. Then he gets another seventy-five thousand for trees. What? Man, look at this. It pays to be an FBI snitch, doesn't it? Then we got other shit here. Look at that, Heather Hutt again. She's going to stop sitting and sleeping lights. So in other words, she's going to make people get the fuck off of her streets, so then we can kick it and push all the homeless over to Madame Sniffles over there at CD six. Always got her nose, her finger in her nose, always having allergies. And then over there at CD one, the revolutionary hamburger Hernandez. So you see, hamburger, you're fucked up in the fucking head. You understand? You can't have a land acknowledgement. The Jews own all the goddamn land. You understand? Not the Indians. Indians got defeated in eighteen twenty-three. Back when that president, General Jackson, became president, he pushed them off the fucking land. Get it smacked. Only the Jew owns the land.
General public comment.
And now for my general comment. As you know, yesterday in federal court, we had the chief of Homeland Security, Deputy Brian K. Williams, Deputy Mayor, bomb threat the entire City Hall. Facing up to ten years in federal prison, what happens, Amelda? He gets a five thousand dollar fine, no jail time and probation. Why? Isn't it a fucking shame that at September twenty-three, he filed sealed documents? I hope it didn't leak. That's right. I hope there wasn't a leak. Ah, man. I smell snitches. I smell them. They're all over this fucking room. That's right, Amelda. That's right. You're snipping into snitches. See, the year is not going to go out, what I heard yesterday, without a new council member being indicted. So anyway, you take that and shove it up your fat-ass niggas' naked.
I don't know if the guests from Occidental College are still here, but everything you just heard is on the exam, so I hope you took notes. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Yes, good morning. Chris Chavez, Coalition for Clean Air, speaking on Item sixteen. We are opposed to Item sixteen.
One minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Yes, Chris Chavez, we're opposed to Item sixteen as well as SB thirty-four. SB thirty-four seeks to constrain South Coast Air Quality Management District's ability to reduce pollution from the ports. It's worth noting that the South Coast has already capitulated to the pressure from the Los Angeles and Long Beach mayors, the shipping industry, industry and from labor, and is elected to pursue a voluntary agreement, a voluntary agreement that we oppose. But SB thirty-four sends a message that California will protect the largest source of smog-forming pollutants in the smoggiest air basin in the nation. It also sends a message that the state and local governments will work against the decades of efforts by environmental justice, environmental, public health, and community advocates. Fifteen hundred Southern Californians die prematurely every year due to our inability to meet air, clean air standards. SB thirty-four would move Los Angeles even further in the wrong direction. Thank you.
You have one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
The, I'm going to read Senator Johnson's book called Transhuman Genocide. I, Ron, I write to Ron Johnson. I'm asking everybody else to help me. Here's one of my letters. "Ron Johnson, we would like to invite you on Zoom to our L.A. City Council right now or any Tuesday. You must ask the president if you can speak for ten minutes." Okay, here we go. "These weapons are positioned as nodes on a mesh." We're talking about E.L.F. Westman's "network" in a grid-like pattern. "These weapons are artificial intelligence, used artificial for targeting, can pick up victims from a crowd in a way that is similar to facial recognition software." Okay, I'm just going to say one of my friends, what I feel very, soul sister in Palmdale last, we heard of her. And I'm going to talk about her. She's religious, so I feel she's on the right, just like Ron Johnson is on the right. He's more right-wing than Trump. I'll have to get around next week.
Next speaker. Good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
So to those of you who are suppressed by the chill of speech, as you exercise your First Amendment to understand.
Which item are you speaking to?
Motherfucker, I'm on forty-eight, big head, pumpkin head. Why do you have to interrupt me? Every motherfucking time, I'm talking about the increase.
You're welcome to continue this term, General, if you'd like.
On probation, asshole. Your fucked-up rule on seven and that dumb asshole Soto up there, who says, oh, Rule seventy-seven, the first paragraph, we have to change it to amend because we don't want to have critical criticism against us. We're a bunch of crying babies, wah, 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 wah. Well, fuck you. Forty-two U.S.C., nineteen eighty-three, and eighteen forty-two and forty-five section. Unconstitutional prior restraint on my free speech. Well, guess what, ladies and gentlemen of the crowd? Fuck you. Straight out. That's my constitutional belief. A little lying bitch like you have to cry about changing rules? Weren't they good enough? Weren't they better than what we had before?
And your time is expired. On item number forty-eight, please move on to another item.
I'll speak on my next item, asshole. Why is it that on forty-five, dickhead, that we're changing the name to Juniper Street off one hundred and Second Street, when we should call it Nickerson Garden Street? Where all the little Nickerson Garden children can know the name of their rural street? What about the Hundred and Third Street Showdown exhibit where the Watts Towers are? Let's, let's put a flag on it, representing the dumbass attorney up there who's trying to figure out what number I'm on. Forty-five, asshole. You got it?
Okay, I believe he, hold his time for a moment.
Yeah, yeah, hold my time.
Use the N-word.
No, I did not, sir. I made reference to Nickerson Garden, asshole.
Okay, well, just so you use the N-word.
Nickerson Garden is a location in L.A. by Watts.
Okay, stop for a second. It's a violation of Rule seven. This is your only warning. Using that word or any of its variations, as described in Rule seven, may not be used again in this council meeting or any future council meetings. If you violate Rule seven again and use the N-word, you will forfeit your speaking time and could be subject to removal and will be subject to removal pursuant to Rule seven and twelve. You can resume your time.
I like clarity on that name, sir, because you're, you're using an offensive word that you made a rule for, and now you're saying I made a statement to that?
Mr. Herman, I need you to stick to the agenda items and move to the general public comment.
Wow. Wow, look at this. Roscoe, where the juju money tree is at in Woodman Square. They want to put a Kawapa Square. Well, let me translate that as S.A.W.A.S.T.I.K.A. Square. What is this spell? Does my spelling have any offense to anyone here? Does anybody want to rebuttal about my clarity of words, my sympathy for the goddamn Kawapa? Well, you know what I think of Kawapa shit? It's the same fucking bullshit I've always said on the record. You're full of shit, Bob. You married a black woman, and that's why you're too ignorant to understand English. Now until my non-agenda public comment. Cohen versus California. Bagdad Zarian versus the United States. Whitney versus California. United States Supreme Court versus the City of Los Angeles and our First Amendment. Why is that? Why? Because today you heard on item number bullshit forty-eight, the goddamn fat bald idiots here. And I'm making reference to all the illegal assholes that support that shit, right? Padilla. Right? Little wetback. Go back to your country when you come into mine. Because I didn't have to cross any borders. I was born and raised here, not like that pussy up there, Soto. Another wetback. So as far as I'm concerned, fat burger, put the cheese in your mouth and shut the fuck up. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker. I apologize to everyone. We have incredibly offensive folks who come here and waste our time, but we do have to listen to them pursuant to the Brown Act. So apologies for folks who had to hear that. Next speaker.
My name is Adam, AKA Surprise. Just general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Great. Yeah, my name's Adam from L.A. Can's Human and Civil Rights Committee. During outreach in nearly two, two dozen former Skid Row Housing Trust buildings sold to Leo Pustilnikov, I have witnessed so many issues with regard to habitability and tenant safety. Since he took over, security went missing, and in some buildings like the Produce, mail access did as well. While people that work for Leo asked us not to bring these things up at City Council, we think it's important for the stories of community members from Skid Row to find their way to elected officials to make sure you all know what is going on and certainly what isn't. The city signed off on the sale of these buildings. What is the city's responsibility to make sure that these buildings are livable? What is the city's responsibility in the sale of these buildings to make sure that tenants are safe? While LAPD expand criminalization of Skid Row residents through the bid's revive DTLA plan, what few resources we have continue to be pulled, shower trucks, bathrooms, et cetera. In the twenty-one buildings the city allowed Leo to buy, as soon as the purchase was complete, security in every building was pulled, whether housed or unhoused, whether housed or unhoused in Skid Row. The city doesn't seem to care about residents' well-being. You should start.
Hi, I'm Greg with L.A. Can, speaking on general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
I've lived at the Produce Hotel in Skid Row for nearly two years now. During that time, I've seen a precipitous decline in the cleanliness, safety, and general services that are required for a dignified living environment. Since Leo Pustilnikov of Hopeful and Affordable L.A. purchased our building, he immediately cut security, drastically increasing the instances of violent crimes and thefts. Our mail was cut off for nine months straight, and now that it has resumed, it's intermittent and entirely unreliable. I find it highly unfair that Leo leverages our suffering and our pain for his, to finance his more glamorous, more high-profile projects. While the city celebrates the reopening of the pantry, our building pantries are overrun with roaches, maggots, and rats. As it is under your collective purview to provide for the safety of L.A.'s most vulnerable citizens, I implore you to remind our landlords of their responsibility to provide safe, inhabitable residences. Thank you.
Okay, great. So hello, my name is Carla Martinez, and I'm here representing the Keep L.A. House Coalition and Inner City Struggle, but really CD fourteen and other Angelenos in the greater L.A. area. We need LARSO to pass. It is not a want, but a need. We deserve dignified, affordable, and safe housing. We deserve council members that actually vote in the best interests of the people and not corporations or greedy people and agendas. And we deserve LARSO to pass now. We've been waiting for this for nearly two years, and we cannot wait any longer. I don't know if they're actually, okay, we cannot wait any longer. The City of L.A. says that they want to deal with homelessness while this is how you can actually help stop it. Not incarcerating people or criminalizing poverty, but by actually helping people in need and giving them a chance to be housed or to not lose their current housing by capping the rent at three percent. Rent keeps going up while our salaries stay the same. And the very people that create L.A. and make L.A. run cannot afford to live here. Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to? Good morning. Which items?
General public comment, if I may.
One minute. Go ahead.
All right, very good. My name is Mr. Pancake. Housing organizer with Los Angeles Community Action Network. Just wanted to speak on observations during outreach in various buildings sold to Leo Pustilnikov. I have witnessed so many issues with regard to habitability and public safety. There was a tenant in one of the buildings that was assaulted because of lack of security in one of his buildings. Since he took over, security went missing, and in some buildings like the Produce, mail access was compromised. While people that work for Leo asked us not to bring these things up to City Council, we think it's important for community members from Skid Row to come and tell their elected officials what is going on. The city signed off on the sale of these buildings. What's the city's responsibility that these buildings are livable? All right. Housing is a human right. I see.
Today, I will speak to one, two, three, four, five, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five.
So not all those items are open to public comment, but I'll give you three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
All items in general. Twenty-five is related to retaining the services of the former city controller, Ron Galperin, for audits of the L.A. Alliance lawsuit. Why not use the services of the current duly-elected city controller, Kenneth Mejia, for those audits? He was elected city controller. Why isn't his team doing these audits? It seems like maybe we should use the services of the guy who was elected a couple of years ago to serve as city controller to do these audits. This seems like a good idea. So we have twenty-six, which is related to the mayor's emergency declaration related to the wildfires. So what we're seeing is a lot of not actually prioritizing rebuilding communities. We're seeing a lot of prioritizing just rebuilding the areas around the Olympics because that's all you seem to care about at this point. And so we should make sure that the rebuilding efforts do particularly prioritize the communities because that is, that is what needs to be rebuilt first and foremost. So twenty thirty-two is related to harm reduction and overdose prevention in the MacArthur Park area in CD one. It's good if there's services that are being done as an alternative to policing because policing is not the appropriate response to this. Criminalizing drugs is not good policy. You need harm prevention and things like that, things to help, help people rather than criminalizing drugs. So let's see. We have some street manners. Okay, so we're kind of moving out towards item forty-eight. So I have the minute now. So forty-eight, the council is desperately trying to mislead people a little bit with this item. So they want, they want the public to think that this item is specifically to target a couple people who come to these meetings to say offensive things during their comments. But, um, but this rule has a history. So previous, so this rule as originally done was regularly, has been regularly used to target black, brown activists who come here and, and talk, fight for racial justice. This was used frequently while this council, council protected Kevin DeLeon for two years, a racist, anti-black, anti- poor, anti-indigenous former council member. They regularly use this rule to target people who came to protest that. In fact, that, if this rule wasn't even enforced for a while, but they decided to start enforcing it because they were mad that people were coming to protest this. So this rule is not really just a, you know, let's target the racists or whatever. This is targeting the people who come here to fight against racism. And it's basic, and it's a Brown Act violation. If, if someone sued, the city would absolutely lose, almost certainly. And it's shame on, maybe you should wonder why people are disrupting your meetings so much. It's mostly not, I mean, you can, I mean, a lot of it's not people just trying to come and be offensive or anything. A lot of it's people who are upset that this council spent, people have to come down here. The council president eliminated call-in comment. So they have to come down here at ten a.m. on a weekday to maybe get their comment heard. And it's not like any of this council pays any attention. We have crisis in this country right now, and the city is not fighting the fascists in the White House at all, really. So, I mean, you know.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Drew Gutierrez, and I'm a member of ILWU Local Ninety-four. Born and raised in the port of L.A., been in the longshore industry for over thirty years. I'm here today in favor of SB thirty-four. This bill will help us to keep our work here and not lose our jobs to a rule that will have cargo volume be diverted to other ports. This is Econ one oh one. The city's lease agreement with the terminal operators is based on the volume of containers that flow through the port. We must protect the jobs that sustain one of the biggest economic engines the city has. Vote yes on Item sixteen and SB thirty-four. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Gary Herrera. I am president of the International Longshore Warehouse Union, Local Thirteen. I represent close to sixteen thousand workers. I'm here to tell you I'm in support of SB thirty-four for numerous reasons. SB thirty-four creates a balance between economic justice and environmental justice. It does not stop the AQMD from implementing a rule to reach their goal of clean and zero emissions. But what SB thirty-four does is it has safeguards for workers. It protects workers from losing their job to when cargo is diverted, and it also doesn't allow for public money to get rid of the taxpayers' dollar while they lose a job. So the false narrative that the AQMD cannot implement a rule is wrong. They can. But workers have a right to have a job. They have protections in SB thirty-four. And that's why voting yes on this resolution is imperative, not to the men and women of the ILWU, but every worker, a carpenter, a trucker, a warehouseman, or lady. But we must protect jobs, and that's what this city is supposed to stand its ground on. Thank you.
Good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. City Attorney, start with item number one. Now, let's move on to item number two.
Now, let's move on to item number three.
General public comment.
Now, let's move on to general. I am here to continue to talk about the citywide size discrimination. Every time I'm going to my doctor's office, I'm denied a service because I'm having a three-inch size. But the thing is, our city attorney does not care about that. Every time I'm going to shopping, I just purchased a brand-new iPhone, and then the brand-new iPhone, the Apple Store employee told me that it has everything I love. And then when I open my iPhone, there's no Dana in there. And then when I open...
I'm sorry, Speaker, you need to tie this to something within the city's subject matter jurisdiction.
They told me that customer protection, it's called Los Angeles Customer Protection. They told me to purchase the Apple Care. They said I need...
Okay, so this is your last warning. You're going to forfeit your time if you don't connect it to something within the city's subject matter jurisdiction.
Los Angeles customers continue to get abused because of people having small size like me.
Okay, so Speaker, you forfeited your time. Next speaker.
Hello, I'm Letitia with LACAN, and today I wanted to discuss the tents-down issue where police are harassing the homeless community and forcing them to put their tents down from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. This tents-down initiative is pointless. Instead of providing access to housing and better resources, they are actively mistreating our communities under the guise of cleaning up the streets. Your goal should be to make sure we are housed and safe, not tormented and displaced. I also wanted to address the fact that landlords like Leo are literally neglecting their tenants, tenants who pay rent. But even if they didn't, because of how piss-poor their buildings are maintained, we, the people, will understand. It's time that we start holding these landlords accountable for their neglect and the lack of consideration that they have for their tenants. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Danny Vilsic. I'm currently the president of ILWU Local 63. SB 34 is a balance. It's protecting good union jobs while continuing California's strong record on clean air. The ports have already achieved huge air quality gains: 92% diesel pollution, 71% less NOx, 98% less SOx. Providing collaboration works. Overregulation here will push cargo to other states and other countries with weaker environmental standards. The ILW members are the backbone of our port and our local communities. The ports of L.A. and Long Beach handle 40% of the nation's trade and support thousands of middle-class jobs. We cannot risk cargo caps that threaten that. The SC AQMD has said publicly they won't impose cargo limits or fund automation, but their written opposition shows otherwise. SB 34 simply holds them to their word. SB 34 keeps our ports clean, competitive, and strong.
Good morning, council members. My name is Mickey Chavez, president of the International Longshore and Warehouse Union Southern California District Council, and I strongly urge you to support this resolution in support of Senate Bill 34. I'd like to thank Councilmember McCosker for bringing this resolution. We need this bill signed by Governor Newsom in order to stop the South Coast AQMD from considering the implementation of cargo caps that would decimate not only longshore jobs but many others. Our district council represents the 16 ILW locals and affiliates in Southern California, and not all are longshore, and they too would also be affected by these cargo caps, as well as most Angelenos. Our inland boatmen, without cargo, the funding of our port police would be in jeopardy. They are the first line of defense to protecting our ports and cruise industry from terrorist attacks. The W and the ILW is our warehouse division. There are warehouses all over Los Angeles that would be affected by this. I ask that you please stand with workers and families in support of this resolution.
Thank you. My name is Brady Collins. I'm the director of research and policy at Kiwa. Kiwa co-founded the Restaurant Equity Alliance with the UCLA Labor Center, the Little Tokyo Service Center, and Inclusive Action for the City, which are with me today. I'm here today to speak in support of two motions that will help make the restaurant industry in Los Angeles a more just sector for workers and small business owners. The Restaurant Equity Alliance was founded out of recognition that despite having one of the most sought-after dining scenes in the world, Los Angeles' restaurant industry is plagued by economic insecurity. Workers face stagnant wages and wage theft, and small business owners, many of whom are immigrant entrepreneurs, struggle to compete with larger chains and franchises. By bringing together worker centers, labor unions, community development corporations, and CDFIs, our coalition aims to create a restaurant industry defined by cultural diversity, dignified employment, and economic resiliency. We're proud to have worked with councilmembers Hutt, Soto Martinez, and Girado on these two motions introduced today that will make the city's restaurant industry a more just and equitable place. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Eliza Analco. I'm here to give general public comment. I am a community member of CD14, and I am here to once again remind you that more than half of L.A. renters are rent burden, paying more than 30% of their income on rent, with many being just one rent hike away from losing their home. Many of your constituents have to choose between keeping the lights on, feeding their children, going to the doctor, or keeping a roof over their heads. And because of this, I urge the city council to adopt Keep L.A. House demands for Larso, which includes a cap of 3% with no floor or rent increases based on 60% CPI, whichever is lower, no bumps for utilities and additional occupants, and no rent banking. Tell me, how many more state of emergencies do Angelenos need to go through for all of you to finally support an ordinance that will help your constituents live? Strengthen Larso and adopt Keep L.A. House demands. Thank you.
My name is Carrie Martin. I'm a law fellow at Public Council. On October 3, the city received a letter of inquiry from the California Department of Housing and Community Development requesting information about actions taken to significantly delay and effectively deny the Venice Dell project. This letter alleges that these actions could result in the city's housing element being found out of compliance and the revocation of the city's pro-housing designation for failure to meet its obligations to affirmatively further fair housing. We have submitted a public comment attached to item 24 with this letter for your review. Parking Lot 731 is the site of the Venice Dell project, a council and coastal commission approved 100% affordable housing development that was just awarded $42 million from the state's multifamily housing program on September 18. The city's actions regarding the Venice Dell project have led to four separate lawsuits concerning 731 and the Board of Transportation's Commission's decision in December 2024 to not transfer the ground lease from the city to the developers. Instead of wasting funds on a feasibility study for a non-viable replacement option, we urge the city to prioritize using its resources to build Venice Dell. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, council president and council members. My name is Jorge Quintero, and I'm here on behalf of the Western State Regional Council of Carpenters, representing thousands of skilled union carpenters who build and maintain the vital infrastructure that keeps Los Angeles moving. We strongly support SB 34 in order to council to approve the resolution before you. This bill encourages collaboration between the ports, the city, and the South Coast AQMD to meet environmental goals through partnership, not punitive caps that could harm jobs and commerce. Our members believe that clean air, good jobs can go hand-in-hand. In investing in cleaner technologies and using skilled labor, we could continue to reduce emissions while protecting families sustaining careers. On behalf of the Western State Regional Council Carpenters, we respectfully ask that you support SB 34, and thank you for your leadership in advancing both sustainability and opportunity for working families. Thank you.
Muy buenas dias a todos. Mi nombre es Irma Cervantes, y soy miembro de la organización Inner City Struggle.
Hello, I am Irma Cervantes, a member of the organization, Immigrant Struggle.
Les pido que apoyen la propuesta de la coalición Keep L.A. House para fortalecer Larso.
Yeah, I ask you to support the proposition from the Coalition of Keep L.A. House to support Larso.
La ordenanza de estabilización de renta de Los Ángeles.
Rent stabilization for Los Angeles.
También apoyo el artículo tres, la ordenanza de limitar la temperatura a 82 grados.
I also support item number three to limit the temperature cap to 82 degrees.
Y les pido que voten no al artículo seis para apoyar el proyecto de vivienda asequible.
And I ask you to vote no for item three for the Venice Dell project.
Ustedes que tienen ese poder de hacer que esta del Larso pase, les pido por favor, con todo mi corazón, que nos apoyen, porque es muy necesario, no queremos ver más familias en la calle, ni a personas más en la calle.
You guys have the power to make this happen, so I ask you, please, with all my heart, pass this because we do not want to see any more families on the street.
Y ante mano, muchísimas gracias.
Thank you so much. Adelante.
Okay, gracias. Muy buenos días. Mi nombre es Alicia Godíniz. Vengo como representante de Inner City Struggle y de aquellas personas que desearon haber estado aquí para dar su comentario público, en nombre de todas aquellas personas que están sufriendo desalojos, acosos, una vivienda digna.
Sí, un momento, por favor. Yes, my name is Alicia Godíniz. I am here representing inner city struggle. I come here in the name of representing all the people who are struggling and who have been evicted and who have lost their homes and are struggling.
Como vivo en el área no incorporada del condado de Los Ángeles, quiero valer mis derechos.
Yeah, I want to express my rights since I live within Los Angeles County.
Y que se me escuche.
To be heard.
Como persona ya adulta, mayor de edad, he sobrevivido ya la pandemia y debido a los altos costos de renta.
Yeah, as an adult person, I have already survived the pandemic and due to the high costs of living.
He perdido mi compañero también, y para mantener el hogar para mí ya sería muy difícil.
And I have recently lost my roommate, and to be able to maintain my house, it has been very complicated for me recently.
Solicitamos vivienda económica y pues no queremos más el aumento del 3%.
We just ask for affordable housing, and we don't want any rent to be raised more than 3%.
Por favor, mantengamos a Los Ángeles en buena renta y es lo único que pido, y la estabilización de renta.
Please keep L.A. with good rents. That's all I'm asking for you and to approve the rent stabilization ordinance.
Muchas gracias.
Yeah, thank you so much.
I'm just wondering, in what world, in what world, in what universe, in what public policy milieu would anybody think it makes sense to invest public money, U.S. public money, in automated equipment so that foreign companies can make more money? What is it about... What is it about our obligation as a trustee for the Port of Los Angeles that would require us to disinvest in jobs to make somebody rich in Europe or Asia?
I, again, I've met with Councilmember McCosker in the past on AQMD issues, and I've met with many members of our labor partners on these issues, and I would just say, I don't agree with the way in which you've characterized the opposition to SB 34. I was in the legislative committee meeting that discussed this issue. I'm not sure what letter you're referring to from Wayne, but I do just want to say that I have been... And the board has been repeatedly clear about the need to work with labor to make sure jobs are preserved. That is not what AQMD's opposition to this is about. I don't really need to have an extensive back and forth about this. I hear you. We're not going to agree on this, that's fine. But I did want to correct the record and just say that is not what the board of the AQMD has said in repeated meetings. That is not what our legislative committee discussions have been about in repeated meetings. And I think people are going to vote how they vote, and I imagine that your resolution will carry the day, council member, but I think it's doing the work that we're doing at the board, a little bit of an injustice to claim that that's what we're doing. So thank you very much.
Close the roll. Tabby, would you like to vote?
Do I rise, two noes?
A hideous, massive prison structure, the largest structure ever built in Venice on our last open space, our literal flood plain protecting our fragile canals. It looks like a damn cruise ship crashed into the neighborhood. Zero regard for coastal access, zero environmental review, and less than zero regard for community concerns. Constant disrespect demonstrated by this developer. Name-calling, gaslighting, and endless lying. This project is one of the most egregious wastes of taxpayer dollars I've ever seen. Why? Because we are literally giving away one of our most valuable assets, worth many tens of millions of dollars, for free to a politically connected developer for a plan to build 430 square-foot microunits of housing at an obscene price point. Nearly $2,500 a square foot. Most of our own city employees could not afford a home at that price. I sure can't. We aren't even rebuilding in the Palisades at that price point. Taxpayers all over the city should be outraged. But it explains a lot. It explains exactly why this developer will literally stop at nothing to get their hands on our land. It explains why they keep up the divisive, dishonest behavior even after the commission told them there was no land to build on. Planting misleading stories in the press, calling me and the mayor and the city attorney names, making political threats, and now filing multiple frivolous lawsuits, trying to shake the city and taxpayers down just to push a defunct project that literally makes no sense. Demanding members, pushing their agenda, they are literally like a bad boyfriend that won't go away after a breakup. Colleagues, do you even know why the project was called the Venice Dell? Because it used to be named the Reese Davidson, but eventually became so hated by the community that Arthur Reese's granddaughter demanded that the Reese family name be removed from it. And in case you don't know who Arthur Reese is, he was a businessman who arrived from New Orleans in 1905 and worked shoulder-to-shoulder with Abbott Kinney to build Venice. He became the head of the first Black family to live and work in California, and he and in Venice, California. And he and his legacy are revered in Venice to this day. And his granddaughter, Sonia Reese Greenland, who is also the family historian and trustee, sent a demand letter to the developers asking that their family name be removed, asking for an apology to Venice and to the city of Los Angeles and to, I quote, "all who have learned of this ill-conceived project."